A high sign. Hang on.
Mr. Chairman, we'll have a solider by five o'clock.
I've taken it.
I thought you were going to take that.
I call to order this special meeting of the University of Minnesota Board of Regents, and I'll note that we are again meeting in a hybrid format with Regents Davenport, Johnson, and Kenyanya joining us electronically via Zoom. We have two very important agenda items to get to, so we'll jump right in. Our first item is the President's Recommended Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Operating Budget. We reviewed the proposed budget at the June meeting of the Finance and Operations Committee, and it's back before us for action today. As you've seen in the docket material, there are two separate resolutions related to the budget, and we will take each resolution as a separate action item, beginning with the resolution related to the President's Recommended Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Operating Budget. Before we discuss the annual operating budget, is there a motion to approve the resolution? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved. It's been seconded. Senior Vice President Franz and Assistant Vice President Tonason are joining us for the discussion. And before we turn to the discussion, President Gable, do you have any framing comments you'd like to make?
Yes. Briefly, thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Swigum, and members of the board. Today, we bring before you for action our recommended fiscal year 2022 annual operating budget, which remains unchanged from what was presented for review at the June 10th meeting. As we've highlighted, this proposed budget reflects our commitment to the future, to students, faculty, and staff, and to leading the way, but in a fiscally responsible manner. And, Mr. Chair, amongst the almost daily uncertainty we all faced during this last year, this proposed budget reflects difficult choices and the strength, resiliency, and shared sacrifice of every member of our university family, and I want to express my appreciation and say that we're grateful for all of it. And so at this time, I'll turn it over to Senior Vice President Myron Franz and Associate Vice President Julie Tonason to continue the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Over to you.
Good morning, Chair Powell, Vice Chair Swigum, and members of the board, and President Gable. On your behalf, we're here to present your recommended budget. We want to do a fairly high-level review because we spent a lot of time earlier this month going over it in detail. But so we'll start off with Associate Vice President Tonason reviewing the all-funds budget first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. In total, the President's Recommended Operating Budget for FY '22 anticipates total revenues of roughly $4 billion. The percent distribution of the revenues between the various types, as you see here, reflects some minor shifts from prior years between the pieces, slightly less than in the past, perhaps a percent or so for the state O&M and auxiliary slices, and slightly more for the miscellaneous unrestricted and sponsored pieces. But there are no major changes, just some minor impacts of the pandemic kind of working their way through the budget. Earlier this month, we also talked about total expenditures, which are also estimated to be roughly $4 billion. When comparing to FY '21, the math leads to a higher-than-normal percentage growth projected next year, but that is driven by really an artificially low spending level this last year with the furlough temporary pay reduction program, the hiring freeze, reduced operations, and so forth. We're actually projecting spending to ramp up toward normal next year, but not reach full expenditure levels really until FY '23.
I want to talk a little bit about the President's Recommended Budget and the purpose and deliberate nature of it. Obviously, we're in a transition period where we're trying to balance the sensitivity to our current pandemic-influenced environment and budget challenges, and also with an assertive approach to advancing the system-wide strategic plan Impact 2025. The President's Recommended Budget builds on the successful mitigation of fiscal year '21 and the unprecedented challenges that we faced. The university addressed these challenges through a combination of salary reductions, hiring freezes, use of central reserve balances, and retirement incentive option and other operating expense reductions, and also the application of federal funds. So what we have now is the opportunity to use our resources that have become available. One of the things we talked about earlier this month was the reallocations and using the significant spending reductions that we've used for lower priority items within the units to move those existing resources to the proposed investments under 2025 Plan. We also now know what the state appropriation is. As you recall, we made a $15.5 million request for this fiscal year. The governor signed the higher education bill on Saturday, so we now know that the state will be getting about $38 million. Now, this is a little bit different when you talk about the incremental nature and the biennial budgeting process. So this provides an incremental operation and maintenance appropriation of $19 billion in this year, and also $18 million of that is recurring into next year. So we have $19 million of an appropriation for recurring items this year, and $18 million in 2023. But with a second year and no increase in the biennium, this is where the difference is in terms of what we asked for and what we received. So our recommendation is to incorporate the $15.5 million that we requested in the initial budget as the President's recommendation and hold the $3.5 million that we received this year in fiscal '22 for use in fiscal '23. Clearly, there is more work to be done in fiscal '23 that we'll be beginning work on probably tomorrow. So the other part of the biennial math that we want to talk a little bit about, so if you recall, when we asked for $46.5 million, that was $15 million, $15.5 million this year and in fiscal '23, and an additional $15.5 million in fiscal '23 for the increase to occur over the biennium. But that's not what we got. We got $38 million times two, or $19 million times two for both years, which is $38 million. So that's about 82% of what we requested, if you look at the biennial math of that. So at that point, you know, we need to take a look at the tuition increase that we've also recommended of 1.5% will be part of the resources that we want to add to the budget. But this budget also reflects the fact that we need to advance the 2025 systemic plan that I mentioned. We need to address certain cost increases that we've seen around the university, and we also need to recognize the continuing impacts of the pandemic. As you know, we are estimating not full recovery for fiscal '22, but we also have some of the auxiliaries and the athletic department that we have to work into the fiscal '22 situation. So I'll let Associate Vice President Tonason walk through the numbers of the resources and the expenditures.
Yeah, so the next two slides just go into a bit more detail on those high-level variables that Senior Vice President Franz just mentioned. Focusing on the specific incremental resource changes in our framework for just a minute, we're proposing an increase in available resources of $88.5 million. The majority of the incremental resources, 56%, comes from the roughly $50 million related to internal reallocations. As identified by units, 62% of the planned reductions will be to administrative costs, and the remaining 38% will be to mission-related costs. And within that, the majority of the actions involve compensation-related expense reductions. Moving down the list in terms of magnitude, the state appropriation increase of $15.5 million incorporated into this budget, as Senior Vice President Franz just mentioned, that represents 18% of our total resource plan. The third resource component representing 15% of our annual incremental increase is tuition. The $13.6 million we are estimating is based on enrollment projections from the units this last spring, combined with a general increase in most of our tuition rates of 1.5% and varying changes for our professional and some graduate programs. And finally, unit-generated miscellaneous revenue growth that can be applied to costs in this framework, total $9.8 million, or 11% of the projected resource change. These come primarily from tuition generated this year over budget in about four or five of our units in terms of being available now to cover FY '23 costs. It also comes from indirect cost recovery on sponsored grants and dedicated gifts and endowment earnings. The non-tuition portion of this particular piece represents our continuing efforts to grow our miscellaneous revenues to support our growing costs. And what those resources will be dedicated to is on this next slide. As we described in early June, our largest proposed investment category for FY '22 is support of Impact 2025, and specifically, the need to launch new initiatives to achieve the goals embedded in the plan. Second, 29% of our incremental investments will be to address the impact of lower tuition than budgeted this year in 19 of our units. You can think of this as $25.6 million of base ongoing costs that were to be funded by tuition that simply isn't there. So beginning in FY '22, we have to identify incremental recurring resources, those on the previous slide, to pick up and pay for this $25.6 million of recurring expenses. Compensation cost increases as a portion of the total represents roughly 20% of the planned cost increases. This is based on implementation of a planned 1.5% across-the-board salary increase. And finally, 14% of our planned incremental recurring spending is a combination of roughly $7 million needed for technology agreements and facility cost increases, as well as close to $5 million in miscellaneous support for basic operating needs in the units. These are included in the list of non-compensation investments on Attachment 1 to the budget. In that, Mr. Chair, is a quick overview and highlight of the components of the President's Recommended Budget for FY '22. The resolution we are seeking approval of today incorporates everything that we just summarized, plus the many other details across all the funds, as contained in the narrative and the official attachments to the budget. And, Mr. Chair, we believe the full budget package is both fiscally responsible and responsive to the goals of the President and the Board of Regents. And with that, we are happy to answer any remaining questions.
Thank you, AVP Tonason. And before I open it up for questions, I would like to just ask a clarifying question. The compensation at 1.5%, 18.7%, does that include the fringe increase, or is that a separate, or is it all in there?
Mr. Chair, that includes the fringe that's in there, and that is, the 18.7% is only for the O&M and state special portion of the budget, and so tuition and state of funds as part of the framework.
Okay. So the 1.5% compensation increase is included in the 18.7%?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. And let's open it up now, colleagues. Questions or comments on the resolution before us? Is that bothersome?
It's a little bit like giving a performance in front of a strobe light.
We could have a brief adjourned if you want and have it removed. Okay. Why don't we adjourn?
We don't have somebody for maintenance right now. We'll get somebody for maintenance as soon as they're here. We can take a quick recess and have the bulb removed.
Yeah, adjourned. That's a little strong. A little recess. Okay. Questions and comments on the President's Recommended Budget? Regent Rosha?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, well, I've got a couple of questions before we go, I guess, to the resolution if presented. One of my questions is on the compensation back on that point. I appreciate that it's broken out by different category, but they're all the same number. So really, it could almost just be, you've got the different categories of employees, right? PNA, faculty, and so on, and which is, as you might recall from previous conversations, something that's important to me, that we identify the fact that different employees are in a different place in their marketplace, and, and, and. But by just making it 1.5 across the board, how, do we have the sophistication within that to identify, I mean, is it literally every employee 1.5%? Or are we actually looking at sort of merit market issues? How does that 1.5 apply across that range?
Mr. Chair, Regent Rosha, so there are, I think, two exceptions. It is across the board. It will be every employee with two exceptions. One, remember that we still have outstanding labor negotiations that are continuing, and so those are not yet final. We don't know how those will come out. So that won't be implemented yet, but it is planned at least at 1.5%. And the other is, there is a process allowed so that you can recognize employees who, for performance reasons, should not get a salary increase, that that's allowed within. But of the employees that will be getting a salary increase, they are across the board 1.5%.
Mr. Chair, I can continue. So, you know, we have, reading through some of public comments and stuff, staff that are concerned about the fact, for some, this is a fairly paltry number. There'll be a few hundred dollars, whereas the others will be thousands of dollars based on what one's compensation rate is. And so I think that the board needs to be mindful of that, that from an equitable standpoint or from an impact standpoint, particularly when you think of who the pandemic would have had the most impact on, it's people on the lower end of the spectrum. And so my preference would have been to be more strategic in how we apply those percentages. The other question, this is a pretty big question, and I struggle to find opportunities as a member of the board to ask the question, and maybe we will have an opportunity, Mr. Chair, as we go forward here. But, you know, when we look at the tuition rate, it appears like it's a small percentage. You know, 1.5%, it's lower than inflation. However, if that same percentage has increased in one of our peer institutions is applied, but they're substantially lower at their base, like for those schools that are at 10,000, for instance, it's a 2.25% increase, you know, and it increases the gap between us and our peers. But when I was, you know, trying to spend a lot of time understanding the volume of numbers, and I appreciate the very comprehensive report here, I can't find in the budget, I can't understand where, like Madison, where Madison's tuition rate for a Madison student is about 2/3 of what we're charging a Minnesota student, you know, where we're 50% higher, a little bit less than 50% higher. What in our budget compared to, like, the Wisconsin budget for the Madison campus? And I understand that they're in a more, a broader system and so on, but where would I find the difference? If somebody stops me on the street and says, hey, member of our Board of Regents, as a member of the public, I'd like to understand why Minnesota kids are paying 50% more at the Twin Cities than Madison kids are paying in Madison. How do I answer that question based on this budget?
Who wants to take a swing?
Well, I think one of the things, Regent Rosha, Chair Powell, is that when you take a look at the overall system, and the University of Minnesota is one of the largest, obviously, systems in the Big Ten with a large professional school, research component, graduate schools. I mean, I think one of the things that you have to realize, and I understand Wisconsin has a lot of these things, but I think that the level and sophistication of the entire package of the University of Minnesota presents us with an opportunity and challenge to make those tuition prices, you know, people need to get what they're paying for. And I think that on the Twin Cities campus, I think we're trying to make sure we hit that sweet spot, and then where we can charge a fair tuition that's competitive with the rest of the Big Ten. And I think that, you know, students will have to make those decisions about what it is that they're looking for, but we think that this is still, overall, a great price for the University of Minnesota and what it brings, you know, to the student.
All right. Thank you. Other questions or comments? Other Regents? Swigum? Anyone else with their hand raised? Regent Swigum?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, as I look at this budget of President Gable's, you know, considering all the consequences and all that's taken place during this last year and a half, I see the budget as being very, very reasonable, very responsible for everybody taken in a package, the university community. I do have a question, though, about, last year, we initiated a hiring freeze, which changed to a hiring pause. Are we now transitioning out of that into the peak initiative, which is going to ask for more efficiency and more effective performance? And to the internal allocations, which you mentioned here, are the largest dollar amount of savings in the resources? Myron, can you help me with the, and I think we needed to do the hiring pause, hiring freeze, very supportive. And I think the outcome, the performance of that was very, very good from the numbers I've seen. So I'm coming from a positive standpoint. I think it was very good. Tell me how we transition to the peak initiative and to the internal reallocation.
Mr. Chair, Regent Swigum, Vice Chair Swigum, well, thank you. I think one of the things, to step back like you just did, and look at what were we faced with a year ago, and the hiring freeze, and why it made sense at that time, as we all know how challenging things were. And I think one of the things we gained from that hiring freeze at that time was the strategic advantage to make sure that we didn't commit to a hiring employee size or force that we couldn't afford, given the uncertainty of the pandemic. And we've kept that freeze in place, and as you mentioned, it's now turned into a pause. We want to be very strategic in how we come out of that pause. And that strategic maneuver, that next step, is the peak initiative. As we will describe next Thursday, or next Wednesday, at the board meeting with our consultants from Huron and KPMG, what we're doing now is taking a look at where are the opportunities that we have in all the different academic units and support units and campuses? Where are those opportunities to both make our workforce more efficient, design to deliver quicker, more efficient services? But where do we add people? And what, and we want to use this pause, if you will, as a stepping stone, so that when we hire back, when we start filling some of these new positions, we do so in a much more, or an enterprise-wide strategic goal of doing that. So the peak initiative really is an opportunity for us to make strategic decisions about resources, hiring throughout the university. So that's our goal, and we'll be presenting some of those opportunities to you next Wednesday.
So to follow up, to put it in my words, Myron, could I say that the peak initiative and the internal reallocation is, it's a continuation of the hiring freeze concept, but with a more strategic and a more focused mission, with a more strategic result?
Mr. Chair, I wish I would have said it that way. Yes.
Would that be fair to say?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Regent McMillan?
Thank you, Chair Powell. And I think Regent Rosha raises some good points, and I want to, not in a sense of just defending, but respond to, and at least give you my sense for how I'm coming at this and your point, Regent Rosha, about a more strategic way to dole out the increases, the 1.5%. I might feel similarly had we, were we not coming out of the COVID year, where I think the Gable administration did everything they could to make sure we were careful about impacts on the lower salaried and, you know, workers at the university, where we held everybody harmless, I think, below $60,000, and then implemented a sliding pay scale cut so that they impacted the top-end salaried employees here more than the middle and lower. So I like, your point's a good one, but I think I bring it in that context from last year's outcomes, and I can support this, and also knowing, as Vice President Tonason said, we've got some labor agreements, many labor agreements yet to sort out. So, and then on the 1.5%, just more generally, while I'd like it if we could go another year with a pay freeze, I think in a very, very tight labor market where it's very supply-constrained, you know, we're going to have all we can do to hang on to good employees with this number, and I think it's going to get worse before it gets better in terms of supply constraints there. I hope not, but I worry about that. So that's how I think about that, but I really appreciate you bringing that to the table and to this dialogue. Then on tuition comparisons in Wisconsin, which is something that has been in front of me for all of my 10 or 11 years on the board, I really like to bring a more holistic approach to the table, and I've got to see philanthropy mixed in here. Issues like reciprocity are huge with Wisconsin. And then perhaps most importantly for me, I never want to divorce this dialogue from that differential, because it is substantial. But it didn't arise in the last 10, 11, 12 years. It arose in the decade before that, and it's going to take us some time to solve it, but I've got to see philanthropy and reciprocity mixed in here, too, because without Bob McMaster here, I'm not sure of my number, but I think something close to 14% of the class gets caught in that reciprocity thing, and a lot of those are Wisconsin kids, if not all of them. So I don't know what the answers are. I like you bringing it before us, and I think that President Gable and her team have demonstrated and picked up where President Kayler left off and taken several steps further, this holistic and systemic dialogue about tuition and enrollment strategy more broadly. So this is good stuff. We should be in this space as a board, and we should be discussing it. But I don't know how we solve that differential. I can, I think I signaled last time, I know I did, that I can support the 1.5%, but I don't do so in a vacuum, and I appreciate some of the issues you've raised.
Thank you, Regent. Regent Myron?
Thank you, Chair Powell. The slide, it shows up in our materials at page 122. It's entitled "University of Minnesota Revenue Sources by Fund Category Fiscal Year 2022, $4.0 billion." On the slice of the pie that indicates that tuition makes up 25% of those revenue sources before waivers, which the number is a little over $1 billion, my question is twofold. One, is that figure include the 1.5% proposed increase? And you're shaking your head. Yes.
Mr. Chair, Regent Myron, yes, it does.
And the second question is, my understanding is that enrollment is up significantly at the Twin City campus, more than we at some point had estimated. So, and I know that we are waiting to see what happens over the summer and what the meltdown is from that enrollment. But my question is, does the $1.1 billion plus take into account that significant increase, it sounds like net increase in enrollment system-wide, but certainly at the Twin Cities campus?
Mr. Chair, Regent Myron, let me put it this way. The estimate might be conservative, given our recent information on enrollment, new high school student enrollment for this fall. However, there, particularly on the Twin Cities campus, there are two things that give us pause. One is our transfer numbers appear to be down compared to prior years and compared to what we might have estimated. And the second is that the continuing student registration for courses is also down in many places, and we don't know why. We don't know if that's just a delay, but there are enough variables involved in here that make us confident in feeling good about the estimate that you have here. So in one respect, no, it doesn't add in the additional growth there, but it also doesn't take into account some of those offsetting changes that might, you know, take away from, so to speak, the revenue that we might get. So I'm feeling, I mean, I'm hoping that the tuition comes in a little bit better than we have estimated here, but right now, I wouldn't bet on it at this point. So does that answer the question?
It does.
Okay.
I have no follow-up. Thank you.
Regent Verhalen?
Thank you, Chair Powell. Associate Vice President Tonason and Senior Vice President Franz, I wanted to revisit the state appropriations number, if that's okay, for just a minute, because it was a bit of a complicated math cycle there, and just wanted to walk through it briefly to make sure I understand how the numbers are aligning. So we were given by the state $19 million for fiscal year '22, fiscal year '23. However, this budget is incorporating only $15.5 million of that for '22. Am I understanding that correctly?
Mr. Chair, Regent Verhalen, yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And that $3.5 million is being held for fiscal year '23. Is, can you walk me through the thought process on why with kind of these competing interests? And in referring to that, I'm talking about the $3.5 million additional that were given this year, why that's not being applied as an additional tuition mitigation measure at this time, especially while the university is undergoing the peak initiative and other efficiency measures in cooperation, where hopefully we can find ways to really streamline some of those resources to make up some of those dollars in the interim? And I'd really like a better understanding of that application.
Mr. Chair, Regent Verhalen, well, I think one of the issues is, we sort of don't know what's at the end of the peak initiative, number one. So yes, we anticipate that as we come forward after we do the president's So yes, we anticipate that as we come forward after we do the presentation next week, but in October, we'll come forward with an implementation plan for the peak initiative with some ideas and suggestions about how do we prioritize those opportunities? How do we phase them in over time? And what savings can we anticipate from that? So that's part of the challenge is it's hard to count those dollars yet. So I think the other the other issue is that in terms of the tuition, using this as a tuition adjustment, we believe that the recommended budget at one and a half percent really does represent a balanced approach in terms of resources. Now, the money will be there, so if, in fact, we feel the need to use that, perhaps in fiscal '23, we could decide to use it in a different way, tuition, you know, reduction or something else, but but we're not ready to do that yet. So I think our concern is that by spending that money, so to speak, now, we're committing too early to what we don't know about fiscal '23. And, you know, there's a there's a big gap there in fiscal '23, not just the three and a half million only solves part of that problem. So we've got other work to do along the peak initiative or some other challenges we may have in front of us to get to that fiscal '23 budget number. That's kind of how we're looking at it.
Regent Verhalen, follow up?
No follow-up, thank you, Chair Powell.
Thank you. At this point, let me just ask you, Regent Kenyanya, Davenport, or Johnson, we see you and we know you're there, and let us know if you have questions. Do you does anyone want to jump in now? Or, okay, I don't see any, but just want to want you to know that we're very aware of your presence. Regent, Regent Farnsworth.
Thank you, Chair Powell. And just before I get to everything else, I was going to say, just a quick follow-up on what Regent Verhalen was asking about around that $3.5 million contingency. So just to clarify, to make sure that I heard that correctly, so depending on how the trajectory of the peak initiative works out and some other things, you're just you feel more comfortable holding that as a contingency for now as opposed to, you know, putting it towards a tuition mitigation strategy or anything else?
Chair Powell, Regent Farnsworth, yes. And I think, you know, one of the, you know, it's, we're disappointed we didn't get all the money we requested from the O and M request from the state. And since we did not, we feel it's really appropriate to maintain that reserve or that balance until we have a better look at fiscal '23.
All right, thank you. Yes, so I'll just make a few brief comments that I was coming into this with. So first, just wanted to thank both of you, President Gable and everyone else who was involved in this budgeting process. I know it's not easy coming out of where we're at at this point and figuring out where we may go as an institution. Also wanted to thank everyone who submitted public comment. I take that very seriously, appreciate the staff, faculty, students, and everyone who submitted that for us, and we had a chance, and I certainly had a chance to review that. One thing I wanted to highlight that I really like is I really think the $36.1 million of investments in our IMPACT 2025 strategic plan makes a lot of sense. Of course, strategic planning is cornerstone of our governance responsibilities as a board, and if we're not supporting investments in it, then that doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But we but we certainly are here, and I really appreciate it seeing that. For me, of course, and this may not come as a surprise to a lot of people, but I'm struggling with the proposed 1.5% tuition increase, particularly coming out of the pandemic, being very sensitive to, I think, what we received through the public comments to the board is probably very indicative of what a lot of other students are feeling, referencing student comments in particular are probably very indicative to what a lot of other students are feeling across our system around coming out of COVID and what that's done to students across the board. So wanted to, you know, particularly put emphasis on that and, you know, kind of recommit myself or say that I've been very interested in kind of the conversation that Regent McMillan was bringing up around needing to continue dialogue as a board around the price competitiveness conversation, and I will be very committed to that going forward for the rest of my tenure here. And just wanted to say that I very much understand the members of the university community, particularly students who are who are struggling with what a proposed tuition increase will mean. Those dollars are very real and wanted to emphasize that. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Farnsworth. Regent Davenport.
Thank you, Chair Powell. I want to first just echo Regent Farnsworth's comments about support for investments in the strategic plan. I think that's necessary to keep our university forward-moving. I also want to weigh in that I believe it's very wise to take a look at our budget over the biennium and knowing that the other Minnesota system is looking at three or more percent tuition increase. The tuition increase proposal at 1.5% is for fiscal year '22 or is it over the biennium as well? Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Davenport.
Mr. Chair, Regent Davenport, at this point, we have not built or made a recommendation on tuition increases for FY '23, so right now that is just for FY '22.
Thank you. Does that follow up, Regent Davenport?
No, that answers my question. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Regent Kenyanya.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and presenters, for the presentation, the budget, and the discussion that's been going on. I won't reiterate a lot of what's been said. There's been good discussion so far. Just to, I guess, point out a couple things. One, obviously, just like everyone else, you obviously don't like to see the 1.5 on the tuition side proposal there. But, you know, the $50 million in reallocations is pretty high and kind of historically high, if I'm correct on that. But, you know, essentially, just considering the past year and and what we were able to do during the pandemic and keep our folks employed and the salary reductions, especially on top of the reallocation, it is hard to try to understand what the alternative would be. The other thing, the other thing is, we're also doing 1.5% for staff and faculty, and I know there's a, you know, cost of recruitment is pretty high, right? Recruiting someone onboarding, getting a new employee is high, and I obviously can't model that in my head. But, you know, if we're not able to retain some staff, there's going to be a cost to that, and I don't know how comparable that will be to to the tuition increase, if that makes sense. But in some ways, there's a preemptive savings there in not having to go, you know, recruit in these positions that hopefully a number of them, you know, we can keep with the 1.5% increase and whatnot. That was a, by the way, my main comment is, I liked the conversation that was starting between Regent Rocha and followed by the comments on Regent McMillan. But, you know, I feel that there's a lot of times where we get into these really important, important conversations, the things that they were bringing up in terms of our pricing compared to our peers, especially the peers that our prospective students end up going to reciprocity, you know, the mix of in-state, outstate, things like that. And the conclusion is that, well, that's a that's an important discussion, but it's a bit out of scope for the budget or whatever that agenda item is on hand. And I don't disagree with that. I just think that we then have to commit to having that conversation at whatever that appropriate time would be, because I it's a pretty fair assessment that, you know, this wouldn't be an accurate time to shape a whole tuition strategy, right, in between trying to pass an annual budget. But if we're back here in 2022, right, going over the budget and whatever tuition proposal is there, and, you know, the same points are brought up and the feedback is, well, you know, the conclusion that this isn't the right time will be a little disappointing because we've had a year to have that conversation. I know some of that was obviously pending the strategic plan, and we have that now. And I fully recognize that our, you know, staff, our administration was preoccupied, right, over the past year with other pressing matters. So as we go into into a retreat, right, into a retreat coming up and the next year of board agenda, I'd hope we'd hash all that out, right, and do that kind of analysis and the modeling that's been alluded to, you know, so that next year, that's not just a short exchange between regions, but something that we've had a chance to fully go through. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Regent Kenyanya. Regent Rocha, before I turn it over to you, let me make a few comments that are in a similar vein. And really, these have been made before, but they're on my list as well, so I'll echo some of these. Given the given the some of the cost challenges that we're going to face as we go into this new year, which AVB Tonneson has detailed, you know, very clearly. I mean, my view also is that the way this has been managed with some tuition, but still below, you know, again, below the rate of inflation, which I do think is important. And for and with the state support for which, even though we didn't get everything we asked for, we got over 80% of it. And I know the board, we're very grateful to the state for continuing to support the institution with higher with higher levels. So some tuition, some state support, other pockets of support. And just to echo Regent Kenyanya's point, very significant efficiencies and reallocations. Regent Kenyana, you said unprecedented. I don't know if it is, but I do know it's a really big number. Now, we haven't seen, you know, this level of, you know, efficiency since I've been on the board. So, you know, there's there's good, there's been good effort from a number of buckets to to pull this budget together, like all of you. I mean, and I said this at the last meeting, I wish that the tuition increase was a little lower, and frankly, I wish that the salary increase was a little higher. But given where we are, I do think that this is it is a balancing act, and I think that this threads the needle, you know, and it's a and it's a very difficult picture, but I do think that this does that, and so I'll be supportive. Regent Rocha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I missed the that the resolution was put before us, or I would have probably approached this a little differently. But thank you. So I guess first I'd say that not necessarily related to this, but because I think all of our votes outside of consent agenda should be roll call. I request roll call on the vote. The second thing is, I guess I'll make I'll move the amendment and then speak to it if it's if it's on the floor. I would move to amend the budget to have a 0% tuition increase with the corresponding reduction in investment in the IMPACT 2025 and other targeted reductions in administrative costs at the administration's direction.
Okay, it's been moved to have a 0% tuition increase, which funded by reducing strategic investment. Is there a second? Been moved and seconded discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So much has been said already on this topic. Two things that were just stated by the chair and by Regent Kenyanya, I think, are worth noting. One is, you know, in my experience, this is an unprecedented reallocation. The with the possible exception of the '91 restructuring, where we closed departments, closed a campus, that was a very substantial reallocation. And while I'm a strong supporter, as you know, in the strategic plan and the focus of and the improvements of the efficiencies, for me, as a member of the board, the balance in our mission is off. If we the other side of it is of the conversation was that when Regent Kenyanya talked about, when do we have this conversation? And as those of you who've been on the board for a number of years and or with me the entire time I've been back on the board, this is a conversation that I've yearned for the board to have, and that's why I asked the question as I did today. If you if you go back with me to 1989, the first budget that I voted on as a member of this board, the issue at the time was not accessibility, it was quality. All Minnesota graduates, high school graduates, were admitted to the U, and it was relatively affordable with tuition being around a couple thousand dollars a year, although even then I had old timers telling me about the days when they were paying just a few dollars in tuition and could work a part-time job and easily pay their tuition, which, of course, if you read the charter of the university, was contemplated by the founders. Even then, we had very low graduation rate challenges. And while we had some departments like chemical engineering or agricultural economics that were ranked at the top in the nation, the experience for students was not a good one. And we understood that. That's why there was the '91 restructuring and other major moves by the university. Well, today, quality is not an issue. Today, quality has greatly improved, and we need to continue to make those improvements. However, the cost of attendance is a real issue for many, many people. When I look at the balance between compensation increases versus tuition increases and the fact that our compensation increases are across the board, we will have substantial compensation increases to to folks that are earning compensation that 95% of our undergraduates will never achieve in their lives. And so from an equitable standpoint, I have a harder time wrapping my head around that. But I'm mostly focused on the fact that our mission is not just to provide a quality education at any cost, but a quality education that is accessible to the working class of our state. And I would point out to the other members of the board that I think it's a very, very difficult thing for the administration to lead on this balance. I think if it doesn't come from the board, I don't think that we will achieve that. And so I have more commentary that I would be happy to share. Hopefully, we'll have an opportunity to have that dialogue with the board in the very near future, as has been mentioned by a couple of other folks. And so I will end it there, but I would I would ask the board to put a stake in the ground. I understand that while the Minnesota state system may have a 3% increase and others other institutions having larger increases, a 3% increase on half the tuition is the same as 1.5% increase on our rate. So we are we are actually growing that. So with that, Mr. Chair, I would ask you to support the amendment.
All right, thank you, Regent Rocha. Would anyone like to speak to the amendment? Regent Farnsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just very briefly, first, I'd like to very much echo what Regent Kenyanya was saying, not surprisingly much more eloquent than me, around having that continued discussion as a board around tuition strategy. I would just echo that, and I'm very, very committed to exploring that during my tenure. I think want to want to thank Regent Rocha for bringing this forward, especially at a time where our institution's coming out of pandemic and understanding how much students have gone through and echoing all the comments we received in public comment and what I said earlier. I think this is about centering the values of opportunity, access, affordability. That's something I think we should be committed to as a board and an institution. So my seconding this was, one, I think it's a proposal, you know, that I would support. Two, I think it gets us to start having that conversation that a number of colleagues, it sounds like, are interested in having. So I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Regent Hirsch.
Yes, thank you, Chair Powell, and thank you, Regent Farnsworth. Regarding this amendment, I can't support it, and the reason is, is, okay, I'm fairly new to the board, and I don't think this is the time for an amendment like that forward. That's reason number one. Reason number two is, when I first started looking at these budgets last year, I was like, oh, my gosh, this is really going to be a big problem. And I think the staff and the president have done a wonderful job about keeping this budget to where it is right now. I think it's I think it's absolutely, I actually think it's a miracle. And lastly, I don't want to cut our strategic initiative money because that's what's going to get us to the future, to what Regent Kenyanya and other people are talking about. And if we cut our, it's like cutting off your nose to spite your face, and I just don't want to cut our strategic. That's why I'm that's why I'm going to vote against the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Hirsch. Regent Swigum.
Mr. Chairman, clarification. Did Regent Rocha ask for a roll call vote on the amendments or on the? On the main motion? I'd ask for a roll call vote on the amendment, too, Mr. Chairman. And could I have it for them, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, we would all like to have a reduced tuition in a in a world that was not real. We'd all like to give faculty and staff needed increases after going through furloughs and pay cuts of last year. They're deserving, and that is the real world. And the initiative that we have to fund, the quality initiative and the 2025 strategy, is so important for this university as we move ahead. It's absolutely critical. We cannot take monies out of there, and I don't even know what they all are, President Gable. I'm sorry, I don't know. I'm I'm just knowing that, as Regent Hip said, investment into our future, into the strategy of 2025, is so very, very important. I don't know this number, but I'm going to ask Mr. Fran- don't know this number, but I'm going to ask Mr. Franz. In, in the higher education bill that just passed the legislature that the governor signed just recently, I think there was also an increase for state grant program in HECB. Was there not, Mr. Franz?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Swigum, yes, there was. There was an increase in the Minnesota state grant program.
I'm assuming that that increase, and I don't know what the number was. Was it like eighteen million or something of that nature? Not quite that much? Oh, you don't know either?
Mr. Chair, Regent Swigum, I don't know the actual number. I've, I've got some information on our projected impacts of the change, but not on what they actually spent.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry, I don't know the number. I think the whole bill was like a hundred million. And, but, so we would be in the ballpark there someplace. Those students that really need help, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, and families that need help to send their student to this wonderful institution, are going to get some enhanced help out of the state grant program. So considering the needs that we have, the investment in the future, the help that will also be part of that higher education bill to students, President Gabel's initiative of, of all students under fifty thousand getting grants and support. Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think we should short ourselves, Regent Rocha. I really don't. I don't think we should short this university and the future of this university. And I just strongly feel that the budget before us is the balanced one that can be best approached and would speak against the Rocha amendment.
Thank you, Regent Swigum. Regent Mayron?
Thank you, Chair Powell. I go back to the IMPACT strategic plan. And then commitment number five, the first item that we committed to was develop leading edge tuition and pricing model for the system. The proposed measure is define a tuition and pricing model by twenty twenty-three. And we've charged Vice President Franz and others to come up with that, what will hopefully be a leading edge tuition and pricing model. Building on the comments by Regent Kenyanya, I think that any conversation about tuition has to be in the overall context about what our tuition model is going to be, and can't just pull at one lever, that is reduce tuition. We all desperately would like to reduce tuition, freeze tuition. But I think it has to be in the context of all the levers that drive tuition. And that's why we put this in the strategic plan under the fifth commitment of fiscal stewardship. We are to get that by twenty twenty-three. I think the administration deserves the right to develop that with thoughtful input from all the different constituencies, addressing all the different levers. So at this point, I'm not willing to just pull one lever, because it would make me feel good to do that by reducing tuition and meeting the desires of students. I would love to do that, but I think it has to be in the overall context of how are we going to address tuition and pricing, which will take into account what our competitors are, are doing as well. So for that reason, because I believe so much in this strategic plan, I will be voting against the Rocha amendment and in favor of the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Regent Mayron. Other, other, other comments? Anyone virtual want to comment? I'll briefly comment that it's, I think it's, it is a question of balance and, you know, and, and I think that the president's recommendation is, is well balanced in, in that regard. Regent Rocha, and then we'll move to the roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll be brief. I would first maintain that my support for the amendment and my desire to have the impact of the amendment is more than just making me feel good. It is, I believe, good policy. And I think it's appropriate policy. And I think the only way we're going to make headway on this is for the board to take a lead on it. Certainly, those of you that have been through the legislative process recently have heard from many of our electors that that is one of their greatest concerns about the, the position of the University of Minnesota right now. And I would, just going to, very briefly on Regent Swigum's comments, I appreciate that the state is, is seeking to support those that have demonstrated need. But I would point out that tuition and for, for those that have spent a public life dealing with taxation and revenue generation, tuition is a tax when, in relation to aid, that is a tax on people for money that they don't make or control. It's based on their parents. It's based on those that are tied to them. And so there are people that may not be eligible for that aid or other support, and their parents have other needs, whether they have a family medical issue, whether they have other challenges. Those students are simply in the mix. Students that don't have that may, may have that support, those students do not. This has real impact on real people. And I believe that we are out of alignment. I think it is out of alignment with our mission, and that is the reason why I would urge you to support this amendment, followed by a continuing conversation for the major realignment to put us back in, in the position of being accessible to people in Minnesota consistent with our regional peers. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Let's call the roll now on the motion to, for zero percent tuition funded through reduced strategic expenditures. Ms. Dirksen, would you call the roll?
Sure. On the Rocha amendment, Regent Davenport?
No.
Regent Davenport votes no. Regent Farnsworth?
Yes.
Regent Farnsworth votes yes. Regent Hipsh?
No.
Regent Hipsh votes no. Regent Johnson?
No.
Regent Johnson votes no. Regent Kenyanya?
Yes.
Regent Kenyanya votes yes. Regent Mayron?
No.
Regent Mayron votes no. Regent McMillan?
No.
Regent McMillan votes no. Regent Rocha?
Yes.
Regent Rocha votes yes. Regent Swigum?
No.
Regent Swigum votes no. Regent for Haylen?
No.
Regent for Haylen votes no. Chair Powell?
No.
Chair Powell votes no. Mr. Chair, there are three yes votes and eight no votes.
So the motion doesn't pass. Let's move now to the resolution to pass the president's budget. We'll also do a roll call vote here. And Ms. Dirksen, would you call the roll, please?
On the resolution, Regent Davenport?
Yes.
Regent Davenport votes yes. Regent Farnsworth?
Yes.
Regent Farnsworth votes yes. Regent Hipsh?
Yes.
Regent Hipsh votes yes. Regent Johnson?
Yes.
Regent Johnson votes yes. Regent Kenyanya?
Yes.
Regent Kenyanya votes yes. Regent Mayron?
Yes.
Regent Mayron votes yes. Regent McMillan?
Yes.
Regent McMillan votes yes. Regent Rocha?
No.
Regent Rocha votes no. Regent Swigum?
Yes.
Regent Swigum votes yes. Regent for Haylen?
Yes.
Regent for Haylen votes yes. Chair Powell?
Yes.
Chair Powell votes yes. Mr. Chair, there are ten yes votes and one no vote.
Very good. Thank you. That motion is approved. The next resolution before us relates to debt issuance for operating purposes. The administration began framing this at our June meeting and is now presenting a detailed proposal for formal review and action. So I'd like to give President Gabel and Senior Vice President Franz and Associate Vice President Volna a brief opportunity to explain the parameters of the proposal. Then I will see a motion in a second before we turn to discussion. So President Gabel, over to you.
Thank you, Chair Powell, Vice Chair Swigum, and members of the board. Today before you for action is a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of debt for operating purposes in the form of commercial paper, and to amend the terms of the commercial paper facility to provide funding for operating purposes. Members of the board, the university, as we've been discussing, has faced significant financial shortfalls over the last sixteen months as a result of changed operations due to the pandemic, leaving certain university departments with significant operating deficits during fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Some negative impacts are expected to continue into fiscal year twenty twenty-two, and as a result, a recommended fiscal year twenty-two annual operating budget includes the use of commercial paper as a source of funds for a loan to certain units. This allows us to function with minimal impact on the academic enterprise. And in addition, the results of any issuance will be reported to the board's Finance and Operations Committee at the meeting following the completion of the transaction. So at this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Senior Vice President Meyer and Franz and Associate Vice President Mike Volna to continue the presentation.
All right. Senior Vice President Franz?
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Swigum and members of the board, President Gabel, thank you. The president has adequately, very clearly outlined the process here. What we are here to do today with this resolution is to amend the terms of the current commercial paper facility and the issuance of debt for operating purposes. According to Board of Regents policies, the Board of Regents has the sole authority to issue debt for operating purposes. And previously, the Board of Regents has approved the use of commercial paper for other purposes, but not for operating purposes. So this resolution is designed to amend that resolution. And if you look at the bottom of page one twenty-eight, where the resolution is found, you'll see that we're asking you to, to make an amendment to the purpose of the commercial paper facility to include the issuance and sale of commercial paper for operating purposes as described, generally described by the president and as set forth in this resolution. As you may know, the loan that we anticipate making at this point is in the thirty-five to forty million dollar area. It's solely with respect to the athletics and not with respect to auxiliaries. And we anticipate that, and on paragraph two, page one twenty-nine of the resolution, that the limit would be fifty million dollars, but we believe we're well below that. And if, if there's circumstances that require us to go beyond that, we will come back before the board to make any requests beyond that limit. And that is the nature of the resolution, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the resolution related to amendment of terms of commercial paper facility and issuance of debt for operating purposes? A motion? It's been moved. Is there a second? Second. Moved and seconded. Thank you. Let's turn to our discussion now. Any comments on the resolution? Regent Farnsworth?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A quick question for our presenters. So understanding that, I think you just mentioned at the end of your presentation that if you realize that there were circumstances beyond what we're approving, that you would come back for the board. But will any of the, the loans or any, you know, use for this, will that come back for board approval? Are we just kind of issuing, for lack of a better term, blanket approval? And then, you know, for, for this fifty million dollar ceiling with the loan that you had mentioned, and then anything else?
Mr. Chair, well, the terms of how we would go about issuing the debt is spelled out quite detailed in the resolution. But the purpose for that would be for the operating purposes, and we would not come back, only, we would only come back to the board if, in fact, the ceiling was, was something we had a concern with, the fifty million dollars.
I did add it, Regent.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Regent Rocha?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple of questions. This is, you know, pretty complex for those of us that don't deal with commercial paper on a regular basis, if at all. So how is this, Mr. Chair, how's this paid back?
Mr. Chair, Regent Rocha, the, the theory that we were operating under with the idea of making a loan in the first place is the assumption that the athletic department will generate revenues over the course of the next several years to pay back this loan. So in addition to making their, the revenues support their budget, we anticipate that over time, they will be able to, so, to support an additional payment to make this, these loan payments. So our presumption is that the athletic operations will generate revenues over time to be able to pay this loan back.
Regent Rocha, follow up?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. So that, okay, so it's, that's a pretty significant assumption. I mean, I, I haven't, I guess I haven't seen a, a plan worked out saying this is what we anticipate we're going to have. And obviously, things can go one way or the other pretty quickly, depending on another pandemic, win-loss records, a lot of, a number of things that can happen. I, I just, wanting, as, as this is being used for operation, operational expenditures, I'm just very cautious about it. Because if it was for debt that you could show me, hey, here's the outline debt, and here's where it rests, and this is a better way for us to satisfy that and pay it over time, I would understand it better. But as it is right now, to, what, what protects us against having major decisions and major expenditures being made after we make this approval, as a result of the ability to use these resources to pay for it? I mean, is there, is there any risk to the board that this moves what would normally be a board-approved enterprise outside of the board's oversight?
Mr. Chair, Regent Rocha, no. You remember, the budget that we're proposing for the university has the budget proposal in there for the athletic department. And that is what they will be working on and, and maintaining. This simply provides the opportunity for us to manage the debt that they're going to carry after this fiscal year going forward. I'll let Associate Vice President Mike Volna speak about the, why the commercial paper is the right vehicle for right now. But, but this is not changing in any way. The board's review and oversight of the athletic department budget simply provides for a mechanism to deal with that, the loan amount going forward and a payback mechanism. If it's okay, Mr. Chair, I'll ask.
AVP Volna, please.
Thank you. The commercial paper program is particularly useful for this, for several reasons. One, the rating agencies have already approved the maximum amount of commercial paper that we can issue at four hundred million. So since we are not at that number, using what we already have approved does not increase anything that the rating agencies look at. So no impact to our rating. Secondly, it's short term. It's issued for less than one year. And so it recycles, we have to reissue it. It gives us great flexibility, therefore, if, let's say, athletics had a spectacular season and they had a particularly big windfall, they can pay off some quickly as opposed to being locked into a twenty-year, twenty-five year cycle. And finally, the cost. Right now, we have been able to reissue some of our commercial paper at nine basis points, which is nine one-hundredths of a percent. So the cost is very low, and it provides them with great flexibility. Every dollar that we can save on interest is a dollar they can pay back. So.
All right. Does that get at it? Just one more quick one?
Yep. Miss, thank you, Ms. Chair. Just real quickly, so, and just to understand, and it's likely in the language, is this a one-time approval for operational use of commercial paper, or is this a change to our policy?
Regent, or Chair Powell, Regent Rocha, it's a one-time change. And the resolution limits it three ways. One, by time, has to be issued by December twenty twenty-two. Second, by purpose, it has to be for COVID-related activities. And three, it's limited by dollar amount up to fifty million dollars.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Regent McMillan?
Thank you, Chair Powell. This is a tough one. And using debt to pay for ongoing operational expenses, you know, goes against everything I learned from my brilliant professors at UMD's School of Business and Economics, and everything I learned in thirty-plus years in the business community. But I don't see a better solution. And this is an organization, athletics, now that I'm talking about, that's already saddled with a pretty significant amount of debt, facility-related debt. So they've got their work cut out for them. And nothing about us taking this next step makes me feel good. The only thing that's driving me forward is I don't see a better solution. And I think AVP Volna just outlined the, the low-cost, very flexible nature of this commercial paper. It's amazing. I didn't think we'd see numbers below fifty basis points, and now we're sub-ten. So I guess the money's there. But I do so with considerable hesitation. I will support it, but I do so with considerable hesitation. And I do so knowing we're adding to a debt burden that this organization's already carrying. So they need our help. They need our support. They've got to be creative. They've got to watch their costs big time. And we'll do everything we can to help them dig their way out of this. But there are very few other tools in this toolkit for us to use at this point. So I appreciate, I appreciate the proposal that's brought forward. I will support it, but I don't do so with anything other than significant hesitancy.
Thank you, Regent McMillan. Regent Kenyanya?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and presenters for the information. I, I mean, I, I haven't much about commercial paper, so I'll let Regent McMillan and others evaluate that. I trust the school he went to that taught him about that. But my question is more about the repayment. And I think Regent Rocha asked this question, and maybe I, I missed the answer or just looking for more on that. And it's my understanding that, you know, even before the pandemic and everything, you know, athletics wasn't carrying, you know, a big surplus or anything. It actually was getting some support from the university. It's a large amount. And, you know, from our expert staff and from members of the board that are familiar with this, what I'm hearing is that this is an appropriate measure, and I trust that. I, I'd just like to hear more about that repayment plan in terms of what adjustments are being planned in the operating budget to fit in the line item for the repayment and whatnot. I, I know we made, this board made some changes earlier that obviously might go part into that solution. But I just want to hear. that solution, but I just want to hear a little more about the plan rather than just the vague terms of they'll make revenue hopefully.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Kanyanya. How about it, Senior Vice President Franz? I think they've got 110 million in debt now related to facilities, and it could be pushing 150. Are we going to start to see, you know, as we see their annual planning, how they're going to approach this, getting out from under this debt?
Mr. Chair and Regent Kanyanya, no, excellent question. I think one of the things that we're doing, and remember, it wasn't that long ago where we thought this loan was going to be 75 or 80 million dollars. So it's now 35 to 40 million. That's still a lot of money, don't get me wrong. I'm simply saying that this is a pretty dynamic situation. And so part of the challenge for the athletic department and for us working with them in the budgeting process is to watch this next year unfold. As we mentioned in the other auxiliaries and some other areas of the university, we are not expecting a full recovery fiscally in fiscal '22. We hope for that, and it may in fact happen, but we're not planning that. And so what we're trying to do with the athletic department is a similar kind of arrangement. Outline to us what you see are the likely returns to the generating, the revenue-generating activities at what level, you know, what level of support do you think fans will come back and sit in those stadiums and the facilities? And what will the TV contracts be? So we are in the process of designing that, and we will, you know, work with them and present periodically kind of how we're working on that. We don't have a final plan yet, and part of that is we will nail down what that loan is in a matter of the next several weeks, and we will start working on that. But I think the key is, and one of the things that Associate Vice President Volna mentioned is that flexibility we have with this commercial paper facility is to bite off chunks of it if we can. As you all know, paying down the principal can do a lot, right? So we'll try to manage that as carefully as we can, as quickly as we can. But frankly, there are just a lot of unknowns. But we will, we're putting that together now, we'll be coming back to you with some ideas and payment plans that we think work, but we're not quite there yet.
All right, very good. Thank you. Regent Mehran.
Yes, I have two questions. The first question is, given that the purpose of this resolution is to address the loan contemplated for athletics, is there any reason that we couldn't put in this resolution that this is for athletics as opposed to, right now it's more broad, and had you not said it was for athletics, I could have assumed it was used for a variety of different auxiliary services and not just athletics? So is there any reason not to restrict it and state upfront that this is for athletics? And my second question has to do with paragraph seven of the resolution that talks about that if this resolution is in conflict with any prior resolutions, those prior resolutions are repealed to the extent there's a conflict. Not having seen what these prior resolutions are, I don't know what is potentially we're repealing, if anything at all. Maybe that's something that our General Counsel Doug Peterson can answer. He is, I see his name is on our screen here, so perhaps he could tell us if there are any that he's aware of that are in conflict with this current resolution.
Senior Vice President.
Mr. Chair, Regent Mehran, let me first of all deal with the first part of your question. I think one of the things that we will be examining in terms of this function is, as I mentioned, we don't know exactly how this fall is going to go. But you're right, if we don't label it as athletics, we could use it for other auxiliaries. And so we would prefer that flexibility. We've, Associate Vice President Volna has explained the limitations in terms of timing, amount, and the purpose that we're doing it. So I think we would ask that that, we may, that flexibility remain, just in case things happen. And, you know, our view of this is adding a function to the previous authorizations under the commercial paper facility to do it for operating purposes. So I'll let General Counsel Peterson speak on that behalf, but our assumption is we're adding an opportunity to authorize in this resolution.
General Counsel Peterson, would you like to mine?
Chair Powell, Regent Mehran, unfortunately, I cannot be helpful on this sort of historical question. I have not examined past board resolutions or board policy in terms of ways in which kind of this decision might touch upon, you know, past resolutions concerning budget limitations, investments, et cetera. And so I do not have an answer for Regent Mehran's particular question. Hopefully, there's refuge in the fact that this particular motion has pinpointed to this particular problem, and it's a one-time resolution. So I have to say I'm kind of less concerned with generic language that suggests that this clears the, you know, any runway that may be littered with some limitations from the past.
Regent Mehran, does that get at it?
Well, as, as much as it can. I certainly understand the comment by Vice President Franz in terms of my first question, and I concur with what your rationale, you know, as a former lawyer judge, you like to know what you're repealing before you say you're going to do a blanket repeal. I'd have greater comfort, I assume it's an add-on, and there's nothing that's standing out, but that would be something I'd like to know.
Senior Vice President.
Mr. Chair and Regent Mehran, let me just quote from the fourth or asked paragraph in the resolution, the original resolution that authorized the short-term or long-term financing of capital projects, including purchase of land and buildings, construction and remodeling projects, and the acquisition and installation of items of capital equipment. So those were the items that we understand were listed before. So my understanding is, not having read the prior original myself, that we're adding another function to that.
Okay. Regent McMillan.
Thank you, Chair Powell. Really quick question. It's my understanding this is all for use with UMTC. There's no debt needed to support, I know they have a deficit at UMD too, but it's smaller, they're not looking for anything, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, Regent McMillan, yes.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right. Regent Farnsworth.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very briefly, I would just echo some of the, I guess, procedure concerns or not having perhaps some uncomfort with the clarity level we have that was echoed by some colleagues. I've been listening very intently, appreciate the be-it-resolved clauses in the resolution, getting as close as we can to some specificity. I would echo the concern by Regent Mehran around what we're repealing and wanting to know more about that. And then I think the comment made about if this is for, if this is going to address the athletics loan, which of course has had great interest in the broader community, I think if we could be more specific about saying that, or just part of me, I guess, repeating that is I want to make sure for folks who may be interested in this or may be viewing this meeting that that's very clear to the community. And then also, I understand that this may be, kind of to Regent McMillan's point, that this may be our, one of our only tools left in the toolbox, and I'm willing to get there. I wish we had some more commitment to bring back some of the details to the board as how we're working with this becomes implemented. So hope to, hope to see that as we move towards the fall.
Senior Vice President Franz.
Mr. Chair and Regent Farnsworth, thank you for the comments and questions. I can assure you as the treasurer for this board that I will be reporting to you the changes in this payment program, and that we will be following the strictures, and that is intended that this will be used for the athletic loan, athletic department loan, and only that at this time.
All right, let's take one more, and then we'll wrap it up. Regent Mehran.
I'm just wondering, is it possible, we do have a board meeting scheduled for July, July, is it possible to, is there an urgency that this needs to be acted on today? If we waited and acted on it at the July meeting, thereby at least being able to answer my question about paragraph seven about is there anything we're potentially repealing, we could at least have it answered by then?
Mr. Chair, associate.
Is it time-sensitive?
Chair Powell, Regent Mehran, because this relates to the budget and closing the books for FY '21, our preference would be that we act on it now since fiscal year end does close tomorrow.
All right. Okay. Yeah, I think we've heard, yes, Regent Rocha.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, you know, in defense of a colleague with a question, I know it's a preference, what's, how damaging is it if we, if we get that information before voting on it in a few days?
Chair Powell, Regent Rocha, it's difficult to say. I mean, we will clearly be out for issuing debt later this fall, and we will be showing financial statements that show financial results that are not what we had anticipated when we were preparing the budget. And so I do think it does create some additional complexities in explaining why we ended the year where we did.
Just, Mr. Chair, if I may follow. So to understand, we'd be issuing something before the end of our fiscal year?
No. Chair Rocha, I apologize. You may recall that we will be going out to issue long-term debt this fall for refinancing the BDD debt and some other things. And when we do that, we will have to explain to the rating agencies our most recent set of financial statements, which will be 2021 statements. And they will want to understand then kind of why they look the way they do, and they will look different than we anticipated because if we don't do this today, we will close the books in a different position than we had hoped we would through the budget process.
Okay. I don't see any other questions or comments. It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, sorry, all those in favor of approving the resolution related to amendment of terms of commercial paper facility and the issuance of debt for operating purposes, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Opposed. Okay, it passes unanimously. The motion is approved. Thank you. All right, our second item of business is before us for review and action today. I want to welcome our presenter, our presenters, Senior Vice President Franz, Vice President Kramer, and Athletic Director Coyle. Thanks to all of you for being here today. Before I turn it over to the presenters, I'll ask President Gable to provide framing comments.
Thank you, Chair Powell, Vice Chair Swigman, members of the board. Before you for action today is a resolution for assignment of the TCF Bank Stadium naming agreement from TCF Financial Corporation, also known as TCF, to Huntington Bank Shares Inc., also known as Huntington, as a result of the acquisition of TCF by Huntington. TCF and Huntington announced the acquisition in December, and the transaction received regulatory approval and closed earlier this month. Members of the board, TCF Bank Stadium has been Gopher football's home since the stadium opened in 2009, and I know I speak for all of us when we thank TCF and their leadership team for their important support for the last 12 years. I was particularly proud to be part of TCF's 10-year sponsorship anniversary in 2019, my first year as president, which also coincided with Gopher football's fantastic top-10-ranked season leading to an Outback Bowl victory. What a great day that was. As we pivot ahead with great appreciation, we look forward to all the great possibilities that our new partnership with Huntington will help us create as we collectively support and root on Gopher football to even greater heights and impact. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to my colleagues for their presentation.
All right, thank you. Gentlemen.
Mr. Chair, Vice Chair Swigman, members of the board, President Gable. So we have in front of you a resolution, and so I'm going to start with the resolution, then we'll go through the slide, slide material. So the resolution calls for two, two actions here. The first one is that the board authorizes the president or delegate to consent to the assignment of the naming agreement and approves the stadium name change to Huntington Bank Stadium. The second resolution that we're asking for today is that related to the banking and real estate agreements, the board authorizes and empowers the president or delegate to execute the applicable consents to the assignment and otherwise enter into those agreements on behalf of and in the name of the university. So let's go through, there's a little bit of history here, right? As the president mentioned, it was back in 2009 when it was open, the stadium, and the project cost, many of you will recall, was 288 million dollars, and we had a fundraising campaign of 85 million dollars. Now, through that process, and TCF Bank stepped forward and made a 35 million dollar commitment in 2005 as part of the fundraising campaign for that on-campus stadium. And as part of the original commitment, the naming rights were secured for 25 years or through 2030. In 2017, an amendment to the naming agreement was approved, which added the stadium logo to the playing surface and included an 8 million dollar contribution to Athletes Village by TCF. The 2017 amendment also includes an option for TCF Bank to extend the naming rights to 2040, which would generate an additional 17.6 million for athletics, including a 4 million dollar initial contribution if the extension is executed, which is this fall is the deadline for the execution of that 2017 amendment. So one of the things that, in terms of background, TCF Bank, as we know, has been acquired by Huntington Bank, and that transaction closed in June of this year. Huntington Bank was founded in 1866 and is based in Columbus, Ohio. Following a merger with Chemical Bank in 2020, TCF Bank was based in Detroit, Michigan. So with the acquisition of TCF Bank by Huntington Bank, the expanded entity has dual headquarters, both in Columbus, Ohio, and Detroit, Michigan. Now, the branding will remain consistent, will remain consistent with our current TCF Bank Stadium signage. The proposed stadium name is Huntington Bank, Huntington Bank Stadium. Now, the naming agreement governs the TCF's naming of the stadium logo and other aspects of this sponsorship. Now, if the board of regents consents to the assignment of this agreement, all financial and other terms of the naming agreement will remain the same. The agreement requires consent by the agents, the regents for assignment of the agreement to the successor entity and change of sponsorship name, excuse me, for the stadium. Vice President Kramer.
Vice President Kramer.
Mr. Chair, members, Madam President, thank you. Excuse me. As you're aware, university relations has your delegated authority for brand oversight, which is obviously governed in the first portion here by our board of regents' policy. We also have an administrative policy relating to how university relations protects our trademarks. Huntington Bank Stadium logo was created with obviously the bank, university relations, the athletics department, was reviewed by the university architect, and ultimately approved by the university naming committee as required by university policy. I'm going to give you some brief example usage, including the current usage, and then some conceptual mockups of the Huntington Bank logo. On the outside of the stadium, as we also see on the 3M Arena, by 3M Arena at Mariucci, we don't actually use color. It is more of a, or a silver or aluminum that would remain consistent. So where it says TCF Bank Stadium, it would say Huntington Bank Stadium in that same brushed aluminum. The outside of the back of the state, back of the scoreboard is one of the more prominent areas. Today, you'll see the TCF Bank logo at the very top, and then obviously a very prominent and large Block M. I bring this logo or bringing this picture up not for clarity of any given thing, but to show you the scoreboard from a distance because obviously what you're seeing is the fan experience of the TCF logo at the top, but importantly, two other very prominent logos in the stadium. The Coca-Cola logo in their bright distinctive red on the left-hand side of the top of the scoreboard, and the Dairy Queen logo in their combination of red and white on the upper right. This example gives you a greater clarity on the top of the scoreboard, but also, as Senior Vice President Franz noted, the 2017 amendment, where on the field itself, you see four logos in opposite corners, the Big Ten logo, and then in the opposite, opposite corners, the TCF logo. The Huntington Bank Stadium logo, as you see here, and as approved by Huntington Bank and ourselves, subject to your, subject to your assignment of the naming agreements, would appear on a variety of products, unconsumables, cups, napkins, on the back of the scoreboard. And you'll see, this is obviously different. It has a different look and feel, but this is their green. Important for us, the Block M remains the prominent position on the back of the scoreboard, and then a projected on the field as the 2017 amendment allows. Senior Vice President Franz.
One of the, one of the things we want to bring to your attention too is that there was a royalty and affinity agreements that had been merged and reflected some minor modifications with the objective of reflecting the new entity of Huntington Bank, ensuring that the agreements conform to U.S. Department of Education requirements for marketing financial products to students, ensuring the new relationship with Huntington Bank will reflect the university's values and spirit of the original TCF relationship. It also confirms Huntington products will provide at least as much value to our students, tech, and faculty as predecessor TCF products. There have been no other changes to the agreements other than to bring them together and to change the name. Thank you.
Jim.
Oh, one more. Let me just do a summary of the agreements on the last slide here. So. So in front of us today, we have the Stadium Naming Agreement, and there are changes to that, both in the name and the logo. The U Card Royalty Agreement, we have made, and the Affinity Agreement, we have merged those and modified, as I described. There are no other changes to the lease for on-campus branches, and there are no ATM lease changes that are proposed at this time. We're happy to answer questions.
Mr. Chair. All right. Thank you for that presentation. And so now I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution related to the naming agreement, assignment, and stadium name change. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There is, been moved and it's been seconded. Questions or comments on this resolution? Doug.
I have two questions, Chair Powell. First question is, who pays all the associated costs for the name change? Like the cost of relettering the building? And secondly, is the agreement, do we have the choice to end the agreement in 2030, or do they just have the choice to end the agreement in 2030?
Who pays the costs and can we end the agreement?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, we're pretty sure we know the answer. But Athletic Director Mark Coyle is on the line, and he is our resident authority, and so.
Director Coyle.
Good afternoon, Chair Powell, and members of the board. And Regent, my understanding that Huntington Bank would be responsible for covering the cost of changing the signage.
A.D. Coyle, can you, you're going to have to, we can barely hear you. So if you can, yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry. Chair Powell and Regent Hips, thank you for the question. It is my understanding that Huntington Bank would be responsible for covering the cost of changing the signage.
Right. Thank you. Others? Regent Farnsworth. Oh, here's a second. Oh, sorry. I beg your pardon.
Sorry, Chair Powell. The second part of the question is, who has the right to end the agreement in 2030? Just them, or do we also have the right?
Did you hear the question, A.D. Coyle? Who has the right to the end, end of the agreement? Just them, or is it, can we jointly do it? Or how does that work?
It is my understanding that it's just Huntington Bank.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Who was next? Regent Farnsworth.
Thank you, Chair Powell. Brief question. I think that our obligations, as named in the naming agreement, are very clear. Evaluation criteria is very clear. I'm wondering, was there similar using, looking at one of the example photos in the docket here of the TCF Bank logo blended into the stadium, the particular one on top of the scoreboard? Was there a concerted effort in the design process, or did it come up at all to have the Huntington Bank logo within the maroon and gold accent colors, similar to what was done here with TCF Bank? Because my understanding is that TCF Bank's colors were, I think it was yellow and red. And it seems here that we were able to, you know, their logo was blended into our accent color. So I'm just curious if that ever came up during the design process.
Mr. Chair, Regent? It most certainly did. I have two, two answers. First of all, Huntington reserved for themselves the right, as I think any Nantucket would, including Coca-Cola and Dairy Queen on the scoreboard, to retain their colors. It's a distinctive color for them. It's their corporate mark. They intend to rebrand their TCF brands around, or TCF locations around Minnesota in their Huntington colors. So obviously, they want to use their colors from a fan recognition perspective. I think the university, and I obviously wasn't here in 2009, we were very fortunate in that TCF's corporate colors were extraordinarily similar, although not the same, to the universities. I do have a handout. From a distance, their colors look to be the same as the universities. But actually, from a, and I'll go into excruciating detail on something known as CYMK, which is a subtractive color process, they're actually quite different. So it's remarkable that they are similar, but there was no possibility, from Huntington's perspective, that they were going to rebrand their corporate colors in maroon and gold.
All right. Thank you. Regent Verhalen, or you were going to pass Regent, Regent Rocha?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was remiss on the last vote. I again asked for a roll call on this. I have a question for Mr. Kramer and then a follow-up. That's okay, Mr. Chair. So am I to understand that all utility materials, cups, napkins, in the stadium will only have the Huntington Bank logo as presented on them? Or do we have the ability to have things with the block M, goldy gopher, at our, at our discretion?
Mr. Chair, Regent Rocha, I apologize. I can't answer it at that level in terms of napkins, cups, et cetera. What I could say is, from a branding perspective, if there is existing material, and again, using the example, napkins, cups, et cetera, that feature the TCF logo, my suspicion is Huntington Bank would ask for the same. That is, if TCF tissues were branded, they would ask for Huntington brand tissues. But I also assume that through this process, there may be some things that they would like to refresh. I'm only using it as an example. Consumables are an interesting thing. I mean, you use them and then you throw them in the garbage. There are some corporations that do not wish to have their brand smeared with ketchup and mustard. Should they make that decision? Then presumably, they wouldn't put it on napkins. But that's for them to think.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to bring a motion, and then if I, if I can follow that. I, I move to do a strike-all amendment to direct the administration to return to Huntington Bank and negotiate a, a logo that is jointly acceptable, incorporating our colors and motif, with then a presentation back to the board of the agreement with a full range of, of, of the presentation to include what it'll look like on the side of the stadium and on the scoreboards.
It's been moved to strike the resolution and replace with, you know, back-to-work on, on the logo to sort of use loose language. Is there a second?
Second.
Comments on the strike-all resolution? Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. So to start, you know, the, the policy which was presented in the presentation, which I think is really helpful, is that the, the board's policy is to maintain a consistent visual identity system, including name marks and logos, that reinforces and protects the university's identity, distinguishes the university from other institutions, and reflects the university's tradition and heritage. By way of a little bit of background, I sent an email, actually, I contacted the board office back in February, and I had a response back from, from General Counsel. I won't provide what General Counsel stated, but my, my response was that, you know, this is back in, again, in February. So this is not a new issue to me. The Huntington logo is green and white, which if retained on our stadium is more compatible with our rivals at Michigan State University or the University of North Dakota. Well, not, well, it's a, TCF's logo was embedded complimentary to the university's school colors. And, you know, I think there, there is an issue. TCF has a longstanding relationship with the Minnesota community, a longstanding relationship with the university. But I understand the world is, is changed, and I don't object to the concept of Huntington Bank being our partner on the stadium. But just as a practical matter, this is a substantial increase in the presentation. The, the university is not getting as good a deal in this relationship with these logos and this placement than we had with TCF. If you put the TCF logo on a napkin or a cup, you still have the block M on it. They actually, they, they were committed to our tradition and history and had a block M on it. I would, I would, you know, if you, if you take a look at the, at the outside of the stadium, TCF is three letters. TCF Bank is three letters. Huntington is three and a half times that. We don't know what that's going to look like. I don't have an example to show that the entire side of our on-campus facility is, is going to be, is going to say Huntington Bank as opposed to HBC Huntington Bank Corporation or something. It's going to be a full range. But more than that, the look, I, I don't find the 3M in, in Mariucci to be comparable. It's, it's a little deal up there by other advertisers and so on. And certainly, the presentation of this on both sides of our scoreboard to include, I mean, all you have to do is look at it. And you can see there's a substantial difference. And in our, in our agreement, it's one of the provisions that for the board to consider is whether the quality content and design of the proposed assignee's mark, logo, trade name, is, whether that is consistent with, with what the university presents. And I don't think there's any argument that this is consistent with what we have. In fact, in the presentation, it said that this is consistent with the TCF mark. It's not consistent. It's consistent in location, but it's not consistent in the look or even the size of the logo. When you look at the TCF logo on the field as it is now, and this was a big part, you know, back in 2009, I was kind of watching this afar from a bunker in, in Basra, Iraq. But the look of that logo was a big part of the university departing from 12 other programs in the Big Ten, of going to a commercial name. There are only two of us with a commercial name on our, on our facility, and this is an on-campus stadium. And so I think this is a big deal. And I think it's, I think it's going to be something that people are going to be very mindful of as they, as they attend these games. And if you look at the most successful programs, you've got Memorial Stadium, Michigan Stadium, Spartan Stadium, Ohio Stadium. If we're going to do this, if we continue down this path with this kind of a presentation where somebody else is now, is now the marquee on a university campus facility, it needs to be consistent with what we are, what, how we look, what we do. To our friends at Huntington Bank, I would think that they would want to do something that does incorporate that warm feel as opposed to having something that sort of emphasizes the fact that this is not TCF Bank and that this is a different enterprise. So with that, Mr. Chair, I, I believe that we have the right to communicate with them about our desire to have a logo that is, in, in defense of our institution's look and tradition. And so with that, I would ask that you support the amendment and that we bring this back for an agreement with a full understanding of what these logos are going to look like and where they're going to be placed, consistent with those of us that have been Golden Gopher season ticket holders since 1986 and before. Thank you.
All right. Comments? Comments on the resolution to strike this, the naming resolution? Thoughts, comments?
Question I have, Chair Powell, on the, on the amendment and on the process. Is, is this a thing that needs to happen really fast? A and B, you know, I'd like to hear it from Doug Peterson as well, Council Peterson, so.
What's the timing on this? Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Chair, Regent? The Huntington Bank would like to have this done in advance of the first Gophers game, or to the extent that they can do the majority of their signage. So I believe that's, I apologize, A.D. Coyle would know the exact date, but I believe the last part of August or right before Labor Day. September 2nd. And?
Okay. Thank you. Regent, Regent Hips, follow-up or is that?
The, yeah, okay. Yeah, no follow-up.
All right. Regent Davenport.
Thank you, Chair Powell. I have a question about the amendment itself. Is the amendment saying return and bring back a change? Or is it saying that they relook and we may or may not receive something different? Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah. Regent Rocha.
Thank you. Thank you, Regent Davenport. The intent is that the administration is directed to go back and, and seek a mutually agreeable logo that incorporates the university's colors and tradition. Certainly, Huntington Bank may come back and say, nope, it's this or nothing, in which case that will inform our decision as to whether this is consistent with our, our policy to defend the university's logo likeness, uniqueness, and so on. And, Mr. Chair, I would also ask for a, a roll call on the amendment.
All right. Other, other comments?
Regent Mayron, and then Regent McMillan.
Is Regent Davenport done?
Oh, I beg your pardon, Regent Davenport. Did you have a follow-up?
Thank you, Chair Powell. There's no timeline in that amendment. And knowing now that desired timeline being implementation before the first home game, it sounds, I wonder if we need one. Thank you.
All right. Regent Mayron.
I just want to confirm. I, I believe I heard Athletic Director Coyle say this, but I want to confirm that no costs associated with whatever rebranding is done by Huntington are going to be borne by the university or by the athletic department. I think that's very important, that we not saddle the athletic department with any additional costs associated with this rebranding.
Right.
And perhaps General Counsel Paul could, I'm sorry, General Counsel Peterson could address that.
General Counsel Peterson, did you hear the comment? There've been a couple of comments about costs associated with the rebranding and who's going to bear those. And I don't know if you can shed any additional light on that?
Chair Powell, Regents Maron and Hips, yes. The agreements contemplate that Huntington Bank will, will bear the costs of rebranding.
Okay. Thank you. Regent Mayron?
Thank you. That satisfies me.
Regent McMillan, and then Regent Ken Yonya.
Thank you, Chair Powell. To Regent Rocha's amendment, I, I'm very loath to get into colors, sizes, logo designs. And I say that knowing full well I have a responsibility to carry out my duty as a Regent to protect our brand and image. But having spent the better part of my life in a corporate space and dealt with logos and identities and, and all of that sort of thing, that is near and dear to the franchise of an organization. And I'm more concerned about green and white getting confused by a Michigan State fan when they're here about whether the green and white's compatible with maroon and gold. So I don't want to go there. But to Regent Rocha's amendment, if, if we don't like the deal, we don't think there's enough value, then we should just say no. But I, I, I'm very loath to tell the administration that we know more about branding and logos or that somehow we have to enter that space and second-guess their expertise. I don't, I think there's probably sufficient value here to go forward. And I want to be sure for Huntington and their people that are listening, we're appreciative of the sponsorship opportunity and their willingness and interest in going forward. I do think the confusion associated with green and white may be real, but I just don't, as a board in a governance setting, want to put my stamp of approval on size of font, design of font. I'm, I'm willing to go forward and say this has enough value for me to do it. I think the one question that has come out of this is what happens to other things in the stadium, like cups and napkins and all that stuff? I, I believe that's valuable, and I think that we do want the block M smattered all over that stuff. But as to the signage on the building, the signage on the scoreboard, the signage on the field, I'm very comfortable with the value proposition that's inherent in what they've negotiated. And I would vote against the amendment in terms of telling the administration to go back and find a new set of logos, colors, font sizes, and descriptions that, that work for me. But I am curious and would appreciate any additional detail we can get about the rest of the bargain detail we can get about the rest of the bargain in terms of, I'm sorry, call it cups, napkins, whatever. To my knowledge, when I've been in the stadium, that's usually the vendor selling whatever's in the cup, or whatever the napkin's getting used for, whether it's a Hormel hot dog or a Coors Light beer. Not, not TCF. I don't see that on there. But I guess to do our governance job right, we should understand those secondary and tertiary consequences of this deal. But as to the primary deal and the value they're going to pay us for the signage on the building, I, for one, am very comfortable with that.
Region, Region Hips?
Oh, I beg your pardon. Wrong guy. General Counsel Peterson.
Chair Powell, thank you. Paul Severide is available by Zoom. Paul is a lawyer in the Office of General Counsel who's been sort of involved in a lot of the detailed aspects of the agreement. And I believe he's in a position to comment about where the university's obligations and rights stand with regard to things like napkins and other supplies within the stadium. So with the chair's permission, I would ask Mr. Severide to add some additional detail to the conversation.
Yes, we, thank you for that. We'd love to hear from Mr. Severide. Thank you.
Chair Powell, thank you. Section 17.3 of the naming agreement, grant of licenses, subsection A specifies that TCF, or the bank, is granting to the university the rights to use stadium marks. But the licensing is, it's not an obligation to use them. So it specifies that the license includes, by way of example, only the right but not the obligation to use on the following, let's see, it's at least five or six, seven things here. One of them, number five, gets directly to the question that's been asked. So there's a right but not an obligation to use the stadium marks on supplies, including napkins, eating utensils, cups, condiments, packaging, food wrappers, food trays, all in rendering the stadium services.
So, Mr. Severide, so I guess maybe help us understand what that means. Does that mean that the existing agreement included the opportunity for TCF to have their logo on those materials? So there wouldn't be any change going forward?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or, or comments? Region McMillan?
Thank you, Chair Powell. I guess the other piece of this moving up from the details of logo usage and appearances and branding is the context that we just have, we just transitioned from with approving the use, you know, the extraordinary, extraordinary and hopefully rare and one-time use of commercial paper in this institution's debt capacity to support the precarious financial position of this athletic department. And so I hesitate then to jump into the space of saying, boy, Huntington Bank, this deal isn't rich enough for us, or go back and renegotiate it. We need this. We need this revenue. And so I pause and very carefully consider a charge to the administration to go get us a better deal. Because I think one of the things, as Mr., as Region Rocha said, they may say that's this or nothing. And if that's what we want them to say, then I guess we can send it back. But I fear we could end up with a lesser deal too. And, and then a bigger financial problem for a department in distress.
Thank you, Region McMillan. Region Kenyanya, I didn't forget about you. Please, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'll just briefly say, I mean, I think with the, with the preference date of, you know, before the first game, and, and obviously, you know, these kind of changes take time, but there also is some time between now and then. I think, I think having that conversation again can happen and is okay. You know, the, we certainly, we certainly need the, the support and the sponsorship. And I think we just explore different ways to do that, that, that are more consistent with our brand and our heritage, you know. And my first thought was, you know, this brand is so foreign, you know, to the state and this community. But, you know, then I realized there's about to be 84 Huntington Bank branches here soon, you know, so that thought is kind of quelled. But, you know, as, as our community welcomes the bank and the brand here, you know, they might be more amenable to it, right, in a way that's more closely tied to the university. Again, it could come back with no changes, and that's certainly an option, and we can consider that then. But I don't see a huge harm in, in asking that it be reconsidered. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Region Kenyanya. Senior Vice President Franz.
Mr. Chair, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Severide, for those questions that you answered. And Region Kenyanya, thank you for your comments. I think, you know, clearly we're here representing the University of Minnesota first and foremost. And our goal is to prepare and present to you as the board those options that we think are in the best interest of the university. Is this a perfect deal? I don't think it is. But I don't think I've ever had a perfect deal that I've ever worked on. You know, what we've tried to do is take the original agreement back in 2005 that was made by TCF and honor that agreement and continue that agreement going forward. We've been very, very pleased, and as President Gabel mentioned, supportive of what TCF Bank and their community has done these last years. They've been a great partner to work with. And we've likewise had the opportunity to begin working with some of our new partners at Huntington Bank. So we appreciate the, the fact that they're committed to coming to Minnesota. Huntington Bank is committed to coming to Minnesota. As Region Kenyanya mentioned, there will be a presence in the community of Huntington Bank. We appreciate that effort in, at, at the state level. We also appreciate it at the University of Minnesota level. We really, we really respect what they've done and, and what they've tried to present to us and being partners going forward. I'm not saying that, as I mentioned, this is not the perfect deal, but we recommend that, we believe in the best interest of what Huntington Bank has come forward with to, to continue being our partners going forward. And on behalf of the university, this is a, a deal and a situation that we recommend that we proceed with, I think, in the best interest of maintaining the operational flow of this changeover that we continue at this schedule. And we're happy to take whatever direction you give us, though. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senior Vice President Franz. Region Swigum.
Mr. Chairman, not to prolong this, but I wish I could be more passionate about a color. I wish I could. I can't get myself there. I'm, I'm much more passionate about what the score is going to be at that Ohio State game on September 2nd. Winning that game would help us pay off that commercial paper real quickly. I can, I can assure you that. Sitting here as a layperson, not, not a color person, not a brand person, as a layperson, I'm sitting here thinking that when I'm here in the cold days of November, December, January, February, seeing a little green might, might help me, might help my attitude a little bit. It might bring a bright spot into my life to see a little green in that color, if that be it. And I guess my other feeling as a, as a layperson here, not a color person, is that, you know, I suspect Huntington Bank in their advertisements wants to do something that would promote themselves, that would not only promote their brand, but not tick off people that are their potential customers or current customers. And I would think that they would want to do something in their decision-making powers that would be acceptable to citizens. I don't know if green's acceptable. I don't know if red, maroon is acceptable, but I would guess that their customer, they'd be concerned about their customers as well. And I know our naming committee, I'm going to assume anyway, that our naming committee has probably talked to Huntington about the color coordination and the, and the logos and the brand. I assume that was part of your discussions and negotiations. And I, I'm not smart enough, Mr. Chairman, to go back and to challenge their discussions.
All right. Thank you, Region Swigum. Region Verhalen.
Yeah, to the issue of what the logo looks like in color, I, I see our obligation to make sure that the stadium, the logo that they're seeking to put on the stadium does not bring embarrassment to the university, that it does not conflict with the values of the university, the goals of the university, et cetera. And, and to ask the bank to change their colors for purposes of putting on the stadium, when all of their branches here are going to be marked with a bright green double H logo, as they are in Columbus where the bank started, as they will be in Michigan where the bank will also operate, just seems beyond what our obligations are under the contract that we have that exists right now. And so for those reasons, I wouldn't support the amendment.
Thank you. And I'm just going to weigh in here. I, I think, you know, first of all, I think Huntington Bank, they're outstanding institution. I, you know, I'm delighted that, you know, being that this transition is taking place, that it's taking place to Huntington Bank, I think is a real positive for the university. I think they're going to be an excellent partner. Branding, colors, you know, these things are very subjective. I like their logo. You know, some, some of us don't. I mean, I think their logo's good, and I think it's going to be fine on the stadium. I think the name, you know, will be good as well. So I also will not support the resolution. Region Farnsworth, and then we're going to call, we're going to have a roll.
Thank you, Chair Powell. Very briefly, I wasn't going to comment again, but I think that you can hold both of this at the same time. I, I do, you know, respectfully reject the notion that this is about micromanaging font and colors and whatnot. I think this is a very legitimate discussion about the university's branding, which is in line with Board of Regents' policy and other policy as stated in this conversation. I think per Region Kenyanya's point, we do have a little bit more time and flexibility to make this request. If it doesn't come back in our favor, then, you know, we can go forward in spirit of an exciting partnership, as Chair Powell has just commented on, with Huntington Bank. So I, I just, I do think that this is a legitimate conversation about our branding responsibilities and our responsibilities to the institution in that regard. So I will be supporting this. And if it doesn't pass, I will, will support the main recommendation in, in honor of our exciting opportunities here with Huntington Bank. But just wanted to reframe the discussion a little bit, because I think this is a very, very legitimate discussion to have and appreciate it.
Thank you, Region Rocha. Two more, Region Mayron, then Region Rocha, then we'll call the roll.
Thank you. Region Swigum made the assumption, and I did see Matt Kramer shaking his head up and down, that these issues of branding and color and all of that was covered during negotiations and discussions with Huntington. And if that's the case, I'd like confirmation. And if it is the case, I don't see any reason or basis to go back again to them to redo a discussion that was already had.
Mr. Chair, Region, indeed, that is exactly the case. That was one of our initial discussions with them. And their, I'll, I won't say preference, I can't speak for them. But through every course of their conversation, they have moved from a regional bank as chemical, or I'm sorry, as TCF was, to now a nationwide bank. And consistency in branding is extraordinarily important, that all of us know. When you buy a Coca-Cola in San Francisco, the logo looks exactly like the Coca-Cola in Maine. And that was Huntington Bank's preference.
All right.
Thank you.
Region Rocha, please be brief.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my expectation is we have not run this past any focus groups of Gopher fans or alumni. I certainly wasn't inquired. And as an alumnus, it does matter. The look and the experience, the game day experience is a big part of why people continue to attend collegiate events even during the lean years. And we in Minnesota understand the lean years, and we are pleased that we are looking better now. But it's important. I don't believe that, based on what I've seen, that the area of marketing, the area of presentation is anything close to what TCF had. It's going to be substantially larger. Region McMillan, I deal with marketing a great deal in my career. And I would love to take over somebody else's contract with a newspaper for three by five ads and receive eight by six ads. This is a bigger presentation. They are going to take more space. I'm not asking for them to change their colors. I'm asking for their colors to be incorporated with our colors. That, that is, that's the importance. That is what TCF did. TCF is not maroon and gold. They're red and yellow, or they were. And they put that within a maroon and gold presentation. And the fact is, this is the board that should be defending these interests. I'm, I'm disappointed that the administration is bringing this back. I am fairly confident that we're going to hear about this. People will see it. People will react to it. And I think they're going to be greatly disappointed, and I think they should be. The fact is, we are giving away more than what TCF had received from us out of this deal. And it's going to have a negative impact on the game day experience and the appearance of our on-campus facility. And so I would ask you to support the resolution to send this back, seek to negotiate an acceptable result between both parties, and one that is consistent with the value that we're getting. If we want to give them three and a half times the space, because you have three and a half times the letters in Huntington versus TCF, then we should negotiate a higher result, a better return to us. But we're not. And when it goes up on the stadium, we'll have that conversation then. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Region Rocha. Okay, on the resolution to strike the, the administration's resolution related to naming, we're going to have a roll call. Ms. Dirksen.
Region Davenport?
No.
Region Davenport votes no. Region Farnsworth?
Yes.
Region Farnsworth votes yes. Region Hips?
No.
Region Hips votes no. Region Johnson?
No.
Region Johnson votes no. Region Kenyanya?
Yes.
Region Kenyanya votes yes. Region Mayron?
No.
Region Mayron votes no. Region McMillan?
No.
Region McMillan votes no. Region Rocha?
Yes.
Region Rocha votes yes. Region Swigum?
No.
Region Swigum votes no. Region Verhalen?
No.
Region Verhalen votes no. Region Powell?
No.
Chair Powell votes no. Mr. Chair, there are yet, three yes votes and eight no votes.
All right. Thank you. That motion fails. On the administration's resolution to, related to naming agreement assignment and stadium name change, we'll also take a roll call on that. Ms. Dirksen, please call the roll.
Region Davenport?
Yes.
Region Davenport votes yes. Region Farnsworth?
No.
Region Farnsworth votes no. Region Hips?
Yes.
Region Hips votes yes. Region Johnson?
Yes.
Region Johnson votes yes. Region Kenyanya?
Yes.
Region Kenyanya votes yes. Region Mayron?
Yes.
Region Mayron votes yes. Region McMillan?
Yes.
Region McMillan votes yes. Region Rocha?
No.
Region Rocha votes no. Region Swigum?
Yes.
Region Swigum votes yes. Region Verhalen?
Yes.
Region Verhalen votes yes. Chair Powell?
Yes.
Chair Powell votes yes. Mr. Chair, there are 10 yes votes and, excuse me, nine yes votes, two no votes.
All right. That motion is approved. There being no additional business before the board, this meeting is adjourned.